So, welcome to Bible study tonight. It is so good to see you all. Let's take a moment and center ourselves in the words of a prayer. So let us pray. Oh, good and gracious God, we thank you for your presence with us as we open the words of Scripture. Come to us with your Holy Spirit to inspire us by your word, to compel us to live our lives faithfully and to show us the way to go. Let your Spirit fill our hearts with peace and joy and surround our world with that same peace and that same joy. We entrust all those who are in need this day, those who have no place to lay their head tonight, and those who are cold and hungry. And we entrust to your care and keeping all those who were suffering with COVID-19 and their caregivers. Be with them all, dear Lord, everyone who is in need of healing, that your peace and your comfort will support them all the day long. We ask your presence now in our midst as we study, and in Christ's name we pray, amen. Alright, so we are... Did anything linger for you from last week that we should think about? No, it's just, you know, it's not a trick question. It's okay. So tonight, we're gonna look at the end of the first chapter, and we're gonna try to get as far as we can into chapter eight. We don't have the luxury of time to go verse by verse, story by story, so we're gonna hit some of the highlights. Sort of once you read an exorcism story, you kind of get the sense of what an exorcism is. And, and once you've read a healing story, you sort of know what that's about. So we're gonna hit the highlights. And, you know, if you have one of, a story in these chapters that you want to lift up and you want us to focus on, it would be wonderful to hear what they are. Otherwise, I'm going to pick some of my favorites and, and we'll go from there. Was just looking, Murney sent an email and I wanted to make sure that we, we kind of got to cover some of these things. Yes, okay. So let's look at Mark 2, verse 14. We're gonna jump around. So we're gonna look at Mark 2, verse 14, and to 17. It's actually 13, 13... To 17, and this is Jesus calling Levi. Remember, last week, we ended with the call of the four Andrew and Simon, James and John at the fishing with their fam- their dads. Fishing at the water's edge, and Jesus says, "Follow me." So now he's going to call Levi, and then that's gonna take us right into a controversy. Throughout Mark's Gospel, Jesus is always having a controversy with the Pharisees and the scribes. They are not happy with him in many ways. And so we'll go straight from the call of Levi into the first controversy story. So, "Jesus went out again beside the sea. The whole crowd gathered around him, and he taught them. As he was walking along, he saw Levi, son of Alpheus, sitting at the tax booth, and he said to him, 'Follow me,' and he got up and followed him. And as he sat at dinner in Levi's house, many tax collectors and sinners were also sitting with Jesus and his disciples, for there were many who followed him. When the scribes of the Pharisees saw that he was eating with sinners and tax collectors, they said to his disciples, 'Why does he eat with tax collectors and sinners?' When Jesus heard this, he said to them, 'Those who are well have no need of a physician, but those who are sick I have come to call, not the righteous, but sinners.'" So what stands out for you in that passage?
Well, I'm thinking about, you know, my job working in medical, with the medical field, and how medicine is like that now. That community of healers is very much, at least in my experience, that there's, the care received is very universal. So, a homeless person comes in and is treated just as well as anyone else. There's a, there's a certain amount of equality. You know, and basically, I mean, certainly you can buy your way to certain elite procedures and things like that. But as far as, you know, in the emergen- in the emergency room, or, you know, I work in home health, that when I, we review who we're taking and accepting as patients, there is no consideration whatsoever as to that person's personal circumstances. You're looking at, you know, diagnosis, and do we have the capability to meet the need of this patient? There's never a discussion or a thought to, you know, "Oh, isn't it a good neighborhood or a bad neighborhood?" Or, you know, that kind of, is it? You know, we, we have people that go out to the homeless camps. I mean, it's very, very much a, you know, who needs the help? That's where we're going to go. And that's philosophy. I guess maybe we're a non-for-profit hospital, so maybe that helps, but that's just been my experience.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. Um, let's look at Levi first. He's a tax collector. And just like today, tax collectors were not popular at all, you know? But even more so, at the time of Jesus, tax collectors were agents of the state. They were ages, agents of the Roman government, and they collected the taxes for Rome. And they could also had their own pockets, so they could collect more than what was owed and keep whatever they got that was extra. So they were feared. You didn't just go to a tax collector and hand over your check and say, "I want to pay my taxes." You would go to the tax collector, and the tax collector would say, "You owe this and you owe this."
And so, my understanding that that was how they got paid. I mean, that, they collected the taxes, but they weren't paid by the state.
Yeah, they were, they were probably paid by Rome for their work, but they were also allowed to collect additional wages, so that they could have a better living for themselves than if they were living on what Rome gave to them. Murney, I think you're frozen. So maybe you'll, you'll get unfrozen here in a minute, but it's a good pose for you.
It is.
I'm sorry, Murney. So, Jesus calls this tax collector. He called fishermen first, and then he calls this tax collector, an official of Rome, to, in order to collect taxes. And then he goes to Levi's house. So, so he's sitting in the home of a tax collector, which is really blows the scribes out of their minds. They just can't wrap their heads around why Jesus and his disciples would spend any time with this unclean, forbidden, outside-the-community tax collector. And so they are just blown away by that. I also find it interesting that we're told there were many who followed Jesus, and we don't know what the many is. So there's a lot of untold story that is happening here, that we don't get in the middle, but we know that there were others who followed. And so Jesus says, well, they ask, "Why does he eat with tax collectors and sinners?" And Jesus says, "Those who are well have no need of a physician, but those who are sick, I have come to call the righteous, not to call the righteous, but sinners." So who are those who are well, who don't need a physician in this story? That would be the scribes and the Pharisees. The scribes and the Pharisees are the ones who are well, in the sense that they believe they are better than everybody else. They believe that they have God all figured out, and that, and that they know the way to live in relationship with God. So they don't need, don't see the need for Jesus, and are rejecting him. Okay, so they are the ones who think that they, that they don't need a physician, because they got it all figured out. They don't need this, this son of a carpenter, this guy from Nazareth, telling them what they do, need to do. And so Jesus says, "I've come to call not the righteous, but sinners." It's the sense that Jesus is saying, "You all, the Pharisees and the scribes, have ignored the people on the margins. You've ignored the poor. You've ignored the sick. You've ignored the homeless. You've ignored all those people, and those are the people that I've come to interact with." So, you know, that's, that's what I'm here to do. That's what I'm called to do. Anything else you want to say about that? Nothing. Okay, let's go to, um, let's look at an exorcism. All right, let's look at an exorcism, the casting out of an unclean spirit. I actually got to perform an exorcism one time. Yes, I did. At least the patient thought I did. I was doing my CPE, my clinical pastoral education, at Wake Medical Center here in Raleigh during my 11 weeks. And it was a long on-call night, where I had been called out to all sorts of things. And I get this page from the cardiac intensive care unit, from a nurse, and says, "You gotta come chaplain." And so I go down there, expecting that someone is in cardiac arrest or having trouble, and the nurse pulls me inside and says, "You gotta calm that patient down." He says that there are demons in his room trying to carry him away, and he won't calm down. And if he doesn't calm down, he's gonna undo all the work the surgeon did in his quadruple bypass. So he's got to calm down. So I go in the room to talk to this man, and introduce myself as the chaplain on call, and he says, "You gotta pray with me. We got, I got demons. I got, you know, the devil's here, and you gotta pray with me." So I grabbed hold of his hand, and I started praying, and he started praying, and we went prayed, and we prayed, and we prayed. And, and the nurse was just outside the window of the room, and she kept doing like this, like encouraging me. And, and I could see the numbers on the, on the monitors going down, 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 down. So praying, we sang, we prayed some more, we sang, and slowly he got, he settled down and he went to sleep. And so I left the room, and I told the nurse, "If the demons come back, if he gets agitated again, you call me. I'm here all night." And she, they just laughed, you know, look at what you did. So I get a page early in the morning. It was like six o'clock. And so I get a page back to the cardiac intensive care, and I thought, "Oh, no." So I go back in there, and the man is sitting up and eating his breakfast. And so I introduced myself, and he says, "I know exactly who you are. You are the one that cast the devil out of here." And I said, "Well, actually, I think we both did, and I think God did, you know? I think we claimed the power of God here to provide you healing, and God kicked the demon out." And he said, he grabbed hold of me, said, "No, no, no, you did it. You did it." And he would not let go of my hands. I found out later that he was a Baptist pastor here in town. And so I thought that was really cool. So when I went to my, on my on-call report to my CPE colleagues, there were two Roman Catholic men preparing to be priests, and I shared with them that I had done an exorcism that night. And their eyes got so big, and they're like, "You're a Lutheran! Lutherans can't do an exorcism? You're a woman!" It blew their mind. And I said, "You know, God uses who God uses. Y'all better get used to it." Right. And so it was quite the fun experience. But, yeah, we prayed those, that unclean spirit right on out of there. Let's look at this exorcism. It is in Mark 1, so we're gonna go back a little bit to 20, at verse 21. And I'm just gonna kind of summarize this, this account rather than read it. So Jesus has, it's a Sabbath, and Jesus has gone to the synagogue to teach, which was his habit. He was a, a good Jewish boy, and he was raised to be a good faithful Jewish man. And so he went to this, to the temple on the Sabbath, to the synagogue. And so he was teaching there, and people were listening to him, because he taught as one having authority. And so he commanded their attention, and not as the scribes, which is kind of another sort of dig at the scribes, that Jesus was speaking in a way that they had not. And so then a man is in the synagogue with an unclean spirit, and he speaks, he speaks in the plural. "What have you done with us, Jesus of Nazareth? Have you come to destroy us? I know who you are, the Holy One of God." But Jesus rebuked him, saying, "Be silent and come out of him." And the unclean spirit convulsing him and crying with a loud voice came out of him. They were all amazed, and they kept on asking one another, "What is this? A new teaching with authority? He commands even the unclean spirits, and they obey him." At once, his fame began to spread throughout the surrounding region. So what do you make of that? This unclean spirit coming out of this man?
I don't know, but why was, why was, was it okay to go into the synagogue with an unclean spirit in you?
No. But you, but he was there.
And he was there.
Yeah, you know, these unclean spirits, they hide sometimes. And we don't see them.
And they don't follow the rules.
And they don't follow the rules. So, um, so he was there. And I love the plural speak, you know, "What, what are you gonna do to us?" It's that sense of driving home that there is an unclean spirit inside this person, and probably more than one, you know, that has been ravaging this person. And, and to have an unclean spirit would have meant you were sent outside the community. Nobody wanted to be with you. You were the most unclean. You were scary. And you couldn't be around women and children, and, you know, you just couldn't be around anybody. So, so you had to go out, and you were ostracized. And so Jesus tells the, the man to be silent, and, or tells the demon, the, the unclean spirit, to be silent and to come out of him. And the unclean spirit does. So, the exorcisms and healings that we read about in Mark and in any of the Gospels are really about restoration. Restoration to community, restoration to family. Because people who were sick, people who had an unclean spirit, people who had their hand withered, any of those ways, they were, people were afraid of them, and, and they were sent away. They were sent away to be on their own. And so every time Jesus casts out an unclean spirit, heals a person, he is restoring them back into their family, back into the community, back into a livelihood, you know, back into the temple. And so the whole, the theme is about restoration.
And so, it's a little bit interesting that the, when he's casting out demons, the, the me, the people, person afflicted by the demon doesn't really come to him and ask to be cured, like the other people that have different afflictions are flocking to Jesus to be healed, but he doesn't, and it's, and he doesn't talk about the faith of the person that's afflicted being a component of the healing at all. So it's a little different when he casts out demons than when he heals other people in society.
Yes, good observation. Good observation. There is, there is not a profession of faith. There's not a request. He just, in this instance, this man just shows up, and the, and the unclean spirit starts speaking. And, and they don't, they don't ask to be cast out. They're pretty comfortable, you know? They don't ask to be cast out, but, but Jesus cast them out of this man. And in an act of compassion, really, and restoration. Yeah. Yeah. Good, good observation there. Anything else about that one? Let's go to Matthew 5, and we'll look, Mark 5, sorry, Mark 5, and we'll look at the, the unclean spirits being cast into the swine. The, the garrison demoniac. Now, the temple, the unclean spirit being cast out of the man in the temple was the first thing that Jesus does outside of calling the disciples. Is he, he goes to the temple like it was his habit, and then he casts out this unclean spirit within the confines of the Jewish community. In Mark 5, he's on the other side. He's on the other side of the sea. He's, he's in Gentile territory. And the garrisons were a Gentile people. And so he is, he's now ventured outside of the Jewish community. And he steps out of the boat, and a man comes running out to him from the tombs with an unclean spirit. He had been restrained. He was, must have been a pretty afflicted person, because he was restrained with shackles and chains. And the chains had wrenched apart, the shackles he broke, so he was pretty strong. Night and day among the tombs and on the mountains, he's always howling and bruising himself with stones. What a scary scene of this man. And so Jesus sees him from a distance. Or when he saw Jesus from a distance, he ran to him and bowed down before him, and he shouted at the top of his voice, "What have you to do with me, Jesus, son of the Most High God? I adjure you by God, do not torment me." What do you make of that?
So the demons knew who he was.
Yeah. Demons knew who he was, the unclean spirits, and the unclean spirits were afraid that Jesus was going to torment, that Jesus would torment them, would cause them harm, you know? So what are you gonna do with us? You know, here we are. What are you gonna do? We've been living a fine life out here in this poor man. You know, and so, um, so Jesus says, "Come out of the man, you unclean spirit." So again, the person who is possessed with the unclean spirit doesn't request to be healed or to be set free. The unclean spirit is doing all the talking on behalf of the man or the person that they are possessing. And so Jesus says, "Come out of the man, you unclean spirit," and then he asks him, "What is your name?" And the man says, "My name is Legion, for we are many." What does the word legion mean? It's a medical term that's a Roman military unit of about 6,000 soldiers. Oh, that's a lot of unclean spirits inside of one person. So the man says, "My name is Legion, for we are many." He begged him earnestly not to send them out of the country. So the man, it's, it's hard to know, is it the man speaking, or is the unclean spirit still speaking? You know, they're kind of together, so don't send them out into the country. Now they're on the hillside, a great herd of swine we're feeding. And the unclean spirits begged him, "Send us into the swine. Let us enter them." So he gave them permission, and the unclean spirits came out and entered the swine and the herd, numbering about 2,000, rushed down the steep bank into the sea and were drowned in the sea. Those poor pigs. They're just out there doing what pigs do. And yet they were the recipients of these 6,000 unclean spirits. Now, you know, the Jews, for the Jews, pigs were considered an unclean animal. Okay, they were not, they didn't eat pig. They didn't, they, they didn't raise them. That was something Gentiles did. So they were an unclean animal. And so, it's interesting that the, the, the unclean spirits see the swine, rather than being sent out into the country, which I guess is where they would possess other people. They said, you know, "Just send us into the pigs." And so Jesus does, and then the pigs are so run into the sea. What do you make of that? Yeah, the poor people there around this, in this area, were so concerned about what Jesus had done that they tell him not to go, to go away. "Don't stay in our area." And Jesus says, but the demoniac, the person who was, had the unclean spirit begs Jesus to go with him. "So thankful. Let me go with you. I want to be one of your followers." And Jesus refused and said, "Go home to your friends. Tell them how much the Lord has done for you and what mercy he has shown you." And he went away and began to proclaim in the decapolis how much Jesus had done for him, and everyone was amazed. So Jesus refuses to allow him to follow, maybe because he believes his witness is better served if he goes home. He's being restored, you know? Exorcisms, healings are about restoring a person to their family, to their community. And so he is, he's being restored, and he's being given, he's being commissioned to go and tell others about what the Lord has done. Now, this is a Gentile community. The decapolis is a lot like our, our sense of a county, if you will, or a state. It's a cooperative of other towns. So, so the decapolis was, in the Gentile world, like Richmond County might be, or Wake County might be, with a Raleigh and a Wake Forest, and a Knightdale and a Zebulah, you know? And so it's just this, this cooperative of, of other towns together. And so he did, he began to, to proclaim. Why at this time was he told to proclaim, but all the rest of the stories in here, everyone was told not to proclaim? That's a really quest. What do you think?
That's what stood out to me.
Yeah, that's great. Great.
Maybe not a coincidence that it's the Gentile community that he's allowed to go proclaim to and not the Jewish.
Maybe, exactly. That's kind of where I would go in my, in my thought about that, that it was safe in, in, in the witness of Jesus for him to proclaim to the Gentiles, "Look what the Lord has done for me." And to start that, that relationship there. Then, and, but for the Jews, Jesus is saying, "No, don't tell anybody, because it's not yet time." And so don't tell anybody.
That makes sense.
So, yeah, yeah, so that's interesting, interesting. All right, so that's all the exorcism stuff we're gonna read. How about some healing narratives? Do you have any healing stories in Mark that you found to be interesting?
The story of the paralytic, where his friends lower him down, as ever since I was a young child, that has been one of my absolute favorites.
And why is that a favorite for you? This is in chapter-
The, the, um, his friends rally around him and. And I always, I have it underlined that when Jesus saw their faith. He said to the paralytic, son, your sins are forgiven. So, um, you know, now as belonging to a community of faith. You, when one is struggling and the others rally around them, it's the faith of the community that helps. Um, take care of that person. We have someone in our congregation right now who had a fall and. Was injured fairly badly, um, she lives by herself, her husband passed away earlier this year. And we have people coming in three times a day to help her. Um, with meals and bathing, dressing and all the things that need to be done to help her. Stay in her home, in her comfort space and really just rally around and take care of her and. I see that as a parallel to, you know, this story as to. How a community, building that community of faith builds up everyone. And a real good, really good model of what a community of faith should be.
Exactly, exactly. You are exactly right, um, this is one of my favorite accounts too in Mark. Um, for all the same reasons you mentioned, you know, that it, it is the corporate faith. That, um, that Jesus notices and pays attention to. The paralytic doesn't ask for healing, but, and even the people who bring him. Don't ask for healing, um, their demonstration of faith. Is that they went so far as to go up on the roof, make a hole, lower the man down. Into the middle of the crowd, so they demonstrated their faith and Jesus pays attention. Um, and tells them, um, and heals the, the paralytic. Now, there is a controversy right in the middle of this, um, if you'll look at six, um, through ten. Um, so after the man is, Jesus saw their faith and he says, son, your sins are forgiven. So at this point, he hasn't healed him, it seems. He just announces a forgiveness of sins. Okay? And then the scribes who are sitting there, um, questioning in their hearts. Um, why does this fellow speak in this way? It is blasphemy. Who can forgive sins but God alone? At once, Jesus perceived in his spirit what they were discussing, these questions among them and he says, so why do you raise such questions in your hearts? What is easier to say to the paralytic, your sins are forgiven? Or to say, stand up and take your mat and walk? Which is easier? So, um, but so that you may know that the son of man has authority on earth to forgive sins. He said to the paralytic, stand up, take your mat and go to your home. And he stood up and immediately took his mat. And they were all amazed and glorified God. So the scribes, um. Are questioning the authority of Jesus. And calling his announcement of the forgiveness of sins a blasphemy. That's a, that's a big charge. That is ultimately one of the things that gets Jesus in trouble and leads to his crucifixion. Is, um, people believe that he is blaspheming, um, by calling himself the son of God and by doing all these works. Performing these healings, so, um. So Jesus says, well, you know, is it easiest to say, your sins are forgiven? Or to say, stand up and take your mat and walk? And so Jesus basically does both. And, um, and the man stands up and leaves the house. That, um, I think is a beautiful story. And all were amazed. Anything else about that one? Let's go to Mark five. And we'll do another healing story. Um, twenty-four, yeah. So the last part of twenty-four. There's several things that is happening in this section, um, Jesus, um, at twenty-one. He is, a big crowd is around him, he's by the sea, and then one of the leaders of the synagogue, um, Jarius comes. And says that his daughter had, is sick and to the point of death and asks for Jesus to come and heal her. So Jesus follows him. Um, and then, um, while he's there, and this is a familiar story, um, cause it's, it's in our lectionary. While he is making his way, the woman with the hemorrhage of twelve years touches his cloak. And she is healed. I love the story because there is no mention of her faith. Right? She doesn't say, hey, Jesus, I believe in you, will you heal me? She just comes up behind him and touches his cloak. And she is healed. Jesus immediately aware, says, who touched my clothes? You see the crowd, how can you say? He looked all around to see done it, but the woman, knowing what had happened to her, came in fear and trembling. Fell down before him and told him the whole truth. And then he declares, your faith has made you well, go in peace and be healed of your disease. So the sense of this woman recognizing the power of Jesus, enough to know that if she touches him. She's healed. Is a demonstration of her faith. Um, and so, um, let me let Robin back in. Yeah, we lost Robin, she's coming back. So, um, so that is, um, that's a pretty powerful demonstration. Of, of what it is and how Jesus, um, does healing. Uh, don't be worried, he made his way to the house of, um, Jarius and they're all concerned that the daughter is dead. Um, and Jesus says, why? Do not fear, only believe. Um, and he goes in and he spends some time there. Um, the child is not dead but sleeping and they laughed at him. Um, and then he tells the little girl, he took her by the hand and said to her. Um, to leave the come, which means little girl, get up, and immediately the girl got up and began to walk. So, i- many ways, we're seeing the faith of others. Is what initiates a healing, right? The faith of the four who lowered the man down initiates the healing. The faith of Jarius, who was, uh, a leader of the synagogue, so someone who, um. Probably didn't wanna be seen with Jesus, but yet realized his ability to heal. Um, says, come and, come and care for my daughter, she's dying. And so, take Jesus home and he heals the girl. Um, and then the lady with the hemorrhage, um, it has in her heart a sense of knowing. That Jesus can heal her. And so she touches the cloak. Am I turning around, sorry? I know, it's hard, you okay?
Yeah, 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 one of them died. I died, so now I'm on my.
Now you're on your phone. Alright, good, alright, so those are, um, a couple of healing stories, anything we, else we wanna say about healing? You know, kind of once you've read, read a couple of them, you sort of get the sense of what they're about. And how Jesus works, um, in and through them.
I do have, there are some healing stories that are very sort of passive where. Jesus heals and your faith has made you well, and then there are some that require. Um, some kind of act on behalf of the person who's seeking healing, go wash seven times and things like that.
We haven't read those yet in Mark. I know, we haven't gotten to those yet, um, and so, um. Yeah, um, so when we get to those, we'll talk about how that plays in. And so, um, yeah. Let's look at, um, did you, um, any of the? Oh, let's go to Mark three, I'm sorry, I know we're jumping around, but there's this controversy in Mark three. Nineteen B. It's right after the calling of the twelve, uh, of, of the pointing of the twelve, um, disciples. But here in nineteen B, and it continues down to, um, twenty-eight. Then Jesus went home and the crowd came together again so that they could not even eat. When his family heard it, they went out to restrain him, for people were saying, he has gone out of his mind. And the scribes who came down from Jerusalem said, he has belzebale, and by ruler of the demons, he cast out demons. And he called them, called them to him and spoke to them in parables, how can Satan cast out Satan? If a kingdom is divided against itself, that kingdom cannot stand. And if a house is divided against its house itself, the house will not be able to stand. And if Satan has risen up against himself and is divided, he cannot stand, but his end has come. But no one can enter a strong man's house and plunder his property without first tying up the strong man. Then indeed, the house can be plundered. Truly, I tell you, people will be forgiven for their sins and whatever blasphemies they utter. But whoever blasphemes against the Holy Spirit can never have forgiveness, but is guilty of an eternal sin. For they had said, he has an unclean spirit. Okay. What sense do you make of that? We don't have this in our lectionary.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah. So, you probably haven't heard a sermon preached on this. Belzebale is, uh, a title that goes back to the Old Testament in Second Kings, chapter one. And it means the lord of filth and refers to Satan, the ruler of the demons. So, the crowds have come and the scribes have come. And they are accusing Jesus of being possessed with an unclean spirit. And not just one unclean spirit, but the main one. Belzebale, you know, he doesn't have just a, an unclean spirit, he has the biggest one of all. Um, and so, um, and he, and so they're accusing this of Jesus.
I have a helpful note in my study Bible. Technically, according to the scribes, blasphemy involved direct and explicit abuse of the divine name. Jesus here teaches that it also may be the reviling of God by attributing the spirit's work to Satan. Flips it, he's always flipping stuff around on these Pharisees.
Yes, 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 and so he's saying, you know, um. How can Satan cast out Satan? You know, if you're saying that I am Satan, how could I be casting out? These unclean spirits, um, these satans. And so he goes on to that, and then he turns his attention to whatever blasphemies they other, whoever blasphemes against the Holy Spirit. So you remember at Jesus baptism, the Holy Spirit landed upon him as a dove, the voice of God spoke. And so it was, it was the Holy Spirit, it was God who set Jesus apart for his ministry, for his public ministry. So if you are questioning that I have an unclean spirit. The, the Holy Spirit and God are not at work in me? Then you have com- com- committed an eternal sin. You've grieved the spirit. You've blasphemed against the Holy Spirit. That's a pretty scary, you know, but strong verse, for sure. What do you make of that, anything? Alright, so we have several stories, um, we've got a few more minutes, yeah, good. Um, we have several stories about the disciples, um, and their lack of understanding. Remember that was one of the themes in Mark, so let's go to Mark four. And at thirty-five to forty-one. Thirty-five to forty-one. Um, all of Mark four is about parables. And, um, and we've, we know about the parable of the sower, right? That's a familiar story that we hear, um, in our lectionary, it's, it's a. An easy vacation Bible school story or a Sunday school story. Um, it can be dramatized, get dramatized, so it's just a real easy one. Um, and so, and we've heard the mustard seed, so I'm not really gonna talk about parables right now. Um, and so we're gonna go to verse thirty-five. And so Jesus, um, has, is leaving, um, to go across to the other side. He goes, I, I meant to go back and count how many times he goes back and forth across the sea. Cause he's always going from one side of the sea to the other. Um, and I, I meant to go back and count those references, but I didn't, didn't take time to do that, but it seems like it's happening a lot. Um, so let us go across to the other side, and so they get in a boat. Um, and other boats was there and a great windstorm came and the waves of the boat rocked the boat and were swamped. Jesus was in the stern, sound asleep, and they woke him up, teacher, do you not care that we are perishing? He woke up and rebuked the wind and said to the sea, peace be still. Then the wind ceased and there was a dead calm, and then Jesus says, why are you afraid? Have you still no faith? And they were filled with great awe and said to one another, who then is this that even the wind and the sea obey? So, I would be with the disciples. If I was in a boat, it's being tossed about by the sea, uh, I would be terrified. And I would call out to Jesus, wake up, can't you do something about this? Um, so I'm right there with them, you know, um, and Jesus rebukes them. Um, why are you afraid, have you still no faith? This is the start, there, there are three or four of these, um, these statements of Jesus about. Um, about the disciples and Mark highlights them. Um, of, of them having a very little comprehension about who Jesus is and what Jesus is doing. So we have that story, let's go to Mark six. Forty-seven.
I was just gonna say though. Verse thirty-four, right before that story. It talks about how Jesus does explain the parables to the disciples when they're alone. And then right away after that, they're committing this act of, um, the lack of faith. Find that kind of ironic.
Yeah, yeah, they're a little slow to understand.
Things don't really stick with them.
No.
The first time.
No, no, Mark does not think very highly of them, and so really does sort of, um. Put these kind of narratives together, um, in that way, but yeah. So he's explaining all the parables to them, you know, and they're still probably going, duh, say what? So, so.
Points out too that, um, they were seasoned fishermen and they were still panicked in the water. They were seasoned fishermen and had, um, probably dealt with many, many storms. Or the lack of faith.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
That is a really good point, yeah, I didn't, not, not thought of it in that way, so thank you for, that's, that is really good, um. Because they would have been on the sea a lot when the storm came up.
Right.
You know, so on the Sea of Galilee. Um, and as I understand it, I've not yet been to the Holy Land, that is on my bucket list of places to go. But as I understand it, the Sea of Galilee is sort of surrounded by a lot of mountains. Um, and so it is sort of a wind tunnel, you know, there can be a lot of, uh, of wind. Um, they're not really mountains as much as they're just raised areas, but enough to, to create the wind. So look at, um, Mark six forty-seven. Before that, at forty-five, get into the boat and go on the other head, go ahead to the other side. Do Beth say that one more time?
Immediately.
Get into the boat and go on ahead to Beth Seda. This is after he had fed the five thousand men. Um, which, you know, there were probably a lot of women and children there too, but only the men get mentioned. So, um. So we have, that's the feeding of the five. There's also a feeding of the four. Did you pick up on that? There are two feeding narrative. Here in Mark. Um, the feeding of the five is always the one that gets the most mentioned. Um, but then there's also the feeding of the four thousand people. So, um, and, um, and again, food is left over as they collect food, so, um. So here at forty-seven. Uh, when evening came, the boat was out on the sea. Jesus had been praying, by the way. We get several mentions, mentions of Jesus going up. On the mountain to pray. Um, when he saw that they were straining of the oars against an adverse wind, he came towards them early in the morning. They saw him walking on the sea. They thought it was a ghost. But they all saw him and were terrified, but immediately he spoke to them. Take heart is as I do not be afraid. Then he got into the boat and the wind ceased and they were utterly astonished. For they did not understand about the loaves, but their hearts were hardened. So they didn't understand about the loaves and how. You know, the abundance of food could come from the five loaves and the two fish. Um, and they didn't understand, um, what was happening with Jesus. And again, how he calmed the, how he calmed the sea. Yeah. And then one more. Uh, Mark eight.
One question that, um, where it says, but their hearts were hardened.
Yeah.
I mean, that, um. They were trying, they just didn't get it. That's what's about me. I'm trying. I may not get it, but I'm trying. Why does it say that their hearts were hardened?
Yeah, that's a, an interesting use of the word, um, there, that, that sense of. The heart is sort of the center of, of the gut area for the Jewish people, as I understood the anatomy. Um, and so that's where knowledge lived. Understand the brain. And so.
And so, and so.
That was interesting. So I think, you know, in the sense that it took them so, they, they didn't understand the parables. They didn't understand the feeding of the five. They didn't understand the feeding of the four, you know, they just, they just had trouble. So it's the sense that they're just not, it, it's that sense of, um, did we read the passage? With those who have ears, listen, did we read that one? You get the measure you give is the measure you get. Do we read that? I'm not sure if we read that.
No, we haven't read that, but.
Okay.
We did read that, yes. We'd read that this.
Oh, 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 let's see, where was that? Um, because that's, that's important, I think, to your question. Let me, where did, where was that? Oh. Was that the blaspheming of the Holy Spirit? Mark three. No, that's not that one. Oh, Mark four twenty-four. Mark four twenty-four. Okay, yeah, this is the, the parable of the lamp under a bushel basket. In the middle of Mark four. Um, so if a lamp is brought in to be put under, um. Jesus asked the question, is a lamp brought in to be put under a bushel basket or under the bed and not on the lampstand? So the answer is no, it's not brought to be put under there. It's been put on the lampstand. For there is nothing hidden except to be disclosed, nor is anything secret except to come to light. Let anyone with ears to hear, listen. Then he says, pay attention to what you hear. The measure you give will be the measure you get and still more will be given you. For those who have, more will be given away and from those who have nothing, even what they have will be taken away. That's an important parable. That doesn't show up in our lecture area either. And so, what's it saying? The measure you give is the measure you get. The sense is, um, cause it starts with, let anyone with ears to hear, listen. Pay attention to what you hear. So the effort you put into hearing and listening. Um, will give you great reward. You'll get greater understanding. So the measure you give will be the measure you get. If you give a lot to listening, you will get a greater understanding. If you're not listening, if you're not paying attention. Then you're going to get less understanding. And eventually you'll get less faith. You'll get less sense of who Jesus is. And so Jesus is saying, I'm gonna do a lot of stuff and I'm gonna talk to you about a lot of things. And I want you to have ears to listen. I want you to pay attention to what you hear. So that you will get the understanding that you need. Make sense? So, so I say, I'm glad we went back to this because that's that same kind of sense of your heart is hardened. Since that you're not listening. You're not paying attention. I have just told you and I have demonstrated to you and I have explained it to you and you still don't get it.
I also sometimes notice though, in other places in the Bible where someone's heart is hardened. It's, it seems like it's more of a spirit thing that it's not an intentional thing, but it's. For a purpose later on in the story that you, you might not be aware of. I'm thinking of like Pharaoh, when his heart was hardened at certain times. Um, because the process needed to happen. And if he had acquiesced at that time, um, you know, perhaps the faith of the people would not have been proven out. Um, and in this case, I wonder if it wasn't necessary for them not to come to full understanding at that time. And so maybe their hearts were hardened by the spirit in order that the, the story might play out as it was intended.
Could be, yeah, and we, we don't know, um, you know, what is causing their heart to be hardened, um. It's definitely, um, more of a passive verb, so we don't know who is doing the action. Um, and is it something that is a result of their own lack of listening and, and trying to understand? Or is it something outside of them? And we don't yet know that.
Right.
So, yeah. That make sense? Alright, so we're at one more. Mark eight fourteen. And then we're gonna probably call it a day. Um, Mark eight fourteen to twenty-one. Uh, yeah, this is the comment you made about the yeast, Marty. Now the disciples had forgotten to bring any bread. Oh, I think they're back in the sea, back in a boat. Uh, up above in thirteen and he left them and getting into the boat again, he went across to the other side. So one more trip.
Sure hope the disciples, disciples didn't join Jesus in order to get out of being on the boat all the time.
We're on the boat. Now the disciples had forgotten to bring any bread and they had only one loaf with them in the boat. And Jesus cautioned them, saying, watch out, beware of the yeast of the Pharisees and the yeast of Herod. They said to one another, is it because we have no bread? And becoming aware of it, Jesus said to them, why are you talking about having no bread? Do you still not perceive or understand? Are your hearts hardened? Do you have eyes and fail to see? Do you have ears and fail to hear? And do you not remember, when I broke the five loaves for the five thousand? How many baskets full were broken pieces did you collect? And they said twelve. And the seven for the four thousand, how many baskets full of broken pieces did you collect? And they said to him, seven. Then he said to them, do you not yet understand? I think Jesus is getting pretty upset with them. You know, do you have ears and you fail to hear? Do you have eyes and you fail to see? Um, and so that sense of, um, he's got a sense of impatience. He's impatient with them. Um, and he's, he's just trying hard, I think, to help them see. Maybe it's not time for them to see yet. We don't know. Um, but it's clear that Jesus is expecting them to understand. Jesus wants them to understand. He's telling them. He's trying to help them to understand. And so he's going out of his way to say, um. I want you to look and see, I want you to hear me. I want you to pay attention to what I'm doing so that you can understand. And, and so he's got the expectation and they are just not fulfilling it. Um, and he's getting pretty frustrated, um, with them. Now this whole ma- uh, thing about yeast of the Pharisees and yeast of Herod.
Is that the rise of them?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. You know, um, this sense of, uh, the yeast is gonna grow. You know, the Pharisees are gonna have more and more influence. Herod is going to have more and more influence. Um, earlier in Mark six, we had the arrest and the bed, beheading of John by Herod. Because of lies. It was all because of lies that John gets beheaded. Um, and we didn't talk about that tonight. So, so that has happened before this exchange of here and. And, um, and so Jesus is cautioning them, watch out. Beware of the influence of the Pharisees and the influence of Herod. Um, because they're gonna become a problem for you. You know, and for me. Yeah. So what do you say? How you feeling?
Frustrated with the disciples.
And a little bit sorry for them, cause I'm not sure that I would have done better.
I know, exactly. Yes, yes, you know, we have.
Yeah, right. I'm not, that's, I'm with that, that.
We, we have the, 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 um, the privilege of having hindsight and knowing the rest of the story.
Right.
And they are living in the midst of the story, you know.
With him right there, that, that's what blows my mind is that, you know, he's right there and telling them everything and. Explaining everything.
Yeah, yeah, they're the first witnesses, you know, if only I could sit at the feet of Jesus for a day.
But then again, nobody got it.
Nobody.
Nobody.
Yeah, yeah. And I think in many ways, so that we're not too hard on these, these disciples, many ways. The disciples are a prototype. Of the rest of the Jewish people. You know, they, um, we get some of their names, but we don't get a lot of their, their names in these accounts. They are more, um, the fro- the photo type, the, um, prototype. Of the, the Jewish people at the time of Jesus who'd never get it. They don't get it until he is crucified and then raised by God on the third day. And then the Soterian says, truly, this man is the son of God. A Gentile, by the way, is the first to announce the identity of Jesus before he has been raised from the dead. Um, truly, this man is the son of God. So a Gentile got it. So we, um. We can go through some more of this part if you want to next week. If you have, um, stories that you'd like us to talk about, just. Hold them in your thoughts. Let me know what they are here, um. And then next week, we're going to, um. Finish up eight and move through chapter ten. So read the rest of eight if you haven't already and then read nine and ten. And so we'll go through, um, Jesus is on his way to Jerusalem in nine and ten, um. He's on his way and doesn't enter yet, but he's on his way. And there's some pretty interesting social teachings, um, in Mark, um, in chapter nine and ten. So, um, we'll spend a lot of time looking at them because, um, they're kinda harsh. And so we'll want to, we'll want to look at them.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Good. Well, let's close with prayer, um, and then we'll go on our way. So the Lord be with you.
And also with you.
Thank you. Good and gracious God, we thank you for your spirit that nurtures our faith. That shows us how it is to live faithfully as your people. We give you thanks for the first disciples, even as they struggled to understand who Jesus was. Um, in their midst, we give you thanks for their witness and for the example that they provide to us. We give you thanks for your spirit that, that brings healing and restoration, um, to families and to individuals. To communities as a whole, um, for that is a work that only you can do. We ask that you'll be with our nation as we, um. In this inauguration day, that you'll bless our new President Biden and new Vice President Harris. That you will bless and lead them, that you will bless the Congress, that they will find a way to work together for the good of all. Let your spirit lead our government and lead the world, um, as we continue in this pandemic. Um, continue to bless those who have lost loved ones with your peace and bring healing and comfort to those who are sick. I, we entrust you tonight with our lives as we go forth from our study. That you will grant us a good night of rest, that we will awake tomorrow, ready to live as your people again in this world. In Christ's holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, everybody. Are you gonna watch the concert? The inauguration concert's coming on at eight thirty.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, I didn't know about.